Thumbs up all around? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Providence City Council meeting on September 4th. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Miller.
Present.
Deputy Majority Whip Anderebwa is absent. Majority Leader Espinal.
Present.
Senior Deputy Majority Leader Goncalves is absent. Councilwoman Graves?
Present.
Deputy Majority Leader Harris is absent. Councilwoman Peterson? Council President Pro Tempore Picciardo?
Present.
Councilor Ruias?
Present.
Councilwoman Ryan?
Present.
Majority Whip Sanchez? Councilman Taylor? Councilwoman Anna Vargas is absent. Councilman Oscar Vargas?
Here.
You have ten present and four absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will everyone please rise for the invocation tonight? Counselors, as we are gathered here tonight, we know that the students are back to school. We know the teachers are back to school. And in many ways, we ourselves feel like a back-to-school moment. And I know that we wish strength and blessings for everyone who's undertaking a new school year, a new project, and also for us, as we recommit to our work to the city, to one another. As always, as we humbly ask for guidance so that the decisions we make here today support all of the residents of our great city, and that we work with each other with integrity, we honor one another's opinions and personhood and decision-making. I'd like to share a quote that was from the 1500s and is equally important today. "As we contemplate the vast amount of work to be done for justice and peace in this world, we trust that we will find the grace to accomplish, to believe in, and to hope for the greatest things. As we gather here, we look for grace in the smallest things and are sustained by our confidence in God's presence in our work and in our gatherings." From St. Peter Faber in the 1500s. And we express gratitude for each other, for the work that we do, and for the ability to be able to make the decisions and do the work ahead of us. Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Majority Leader Espinal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, item three.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading, write in three and move approval.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item four.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading, write in four through thirteen.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items four through thirteen?
Madam President.
Pro Tempore Picciardo.
Not on item four, but item number three, since it doesn't change the vote. I would like to be recorded as abstaining on the approval of the minutes.
So noted.
At the appropriate time.
Any discussion on items four through thirteen? Councilwoman Graves?
On twelve, I just would like to make a statement, and I'm awful loud. How pleased I am of the appointment of Patricia Robb. Patricia Robb was one of the co-founders, along with myself, Rochelle, and quite a few others, for the community libraries, and she served for many years. I'm glad she's going back on that board because they need that. So thank you so much for appointing her to that position.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peterson?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo what my fellow counselor said. Patricia Robb is a pillar in the Ward 14 community, and she stands out for not just her work and her achievements in the libraries, but also just being an all-around supporter for transit and just everything. And I am very thankful that you have considered her, as well as our very own Aaron Easter Gardner, who is also very amazing and hardworking in his own right. Thanks.
And I'm sorry, that goes without saying.
But always nice to say, thank you, Counselor. Councilwoman Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just standing up real quickly and just giving a huge shout-out and much gratitude to all of these individuals who are stepping up or continuing to step up and serve the city of Providence. These folks on these boards are really the bread and butter and backbone of making our city the city that we all desire it to be. I just want to quickly give a shout-out to Phoenix, who is here. I know Phoenix has contributed a lot to the city in many ways, so much gratitude for the continuance of that service. And then also, just a huge shout-out to Anthony Simon, who's the Chair of the Rec Board that I also serve on. We have been meeting monthly at a different rec center every month. Big shout-out to the Clerk's Office for making that happen, and we are doing a lot of work to support the Rec Department. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Further discussion, items four through thirteen. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo the expression of those that came before me in regards to those that have taken on the challenge to serve our city. But I also want to point out to our very own Aaron Easter Gardner, who is quite a champion, and I think his expertise will be a great asset to the community library. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please note four through five, I'm sorry, four through 10 as received. Refer item 11 to the Committee on Finance. Note 12 and 13 as received. So noted. And Counselors, will you please join me in giving Phoenix, who's here tonight, a round of applause? Thank you, Phoenix. And I'm so sorry, all other appointments who I may not recognize, I apologize if you are here and I don't recognize you by sight. Thank you for being here, and congratulations. Item 14.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading, write in 14 through 25.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items 14 through 25? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer items 14 through 20 to the Committee on Finance, 21 to the Committee on Ordinances, 22 through 25 to the Committee on Finance. So noted. Item 26.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading, write in 26 and 27, pass on a voice vote.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items 26 and 27?
Madam President.
Councilman Taylor.
Can you read 26? Can the Clerk read 26 into the record? Thank you.
Whereas the city of Providence mourns the passing of Judge Frank Caprio on August 20th, 2025, a man whose life began in the heart of this city and who gave back to it far more than he ever asked of it. And whereas Judge Caprio grew up in Federal Hill, the son of Antonio, an Italian immigrant, and Philomena, a Providence native, who taught him that hard work, compassion, and education were lifelong obligations. And whereas those lessons carried him into the classrooms of Providence, where he passed them on as a teacher of government, and into City Hall, where he put them to work as a councilman serving his Ward 13 community. And whereas, his path then led to the bench of the municipal court, where for nearly forty years he presided with patience and care, weighing not only the law before him, but the lives bound up in it. And whereas, the words he spoke from the bench reached millions through recordings shared far beyond Providence, and in them, people saw a man who treated every person with sincerity and attention, whose presence made the small moments of the courtroom feel serious and kind, and whose consistent acts of decency and consideration reminded people that in a world where such care can feel rare, even small gestures of kindness can brighten a day and ripple outward to make the world a little better. And whereas, his impact reached outside the courtroom as well, through the colleges he advised, the scholarships he created, and the opportunities he opened for students who might otherwise have gone unseen. And whereas, through all of this, his life was steadied by the love of his wife Joyce and shaped by the pride he carried for his children and grandchildren, who stood at the heart of his every endeavor. And whereas, in remembering him now, the city of Providence does not simply recall the offices he held or the years he gave, but bears witness to a life joined inseparably with its own, a life that treated the city as one big neighborhood and one big family, and left it with more kindness at its heart and more room at its table. Now therefore be it resolved that the Providence City Council honors the memory of Judge Frank Caprio, whose life was bound to this city and whose example will continue to guide those who walk the paths he once walked. And be it further resolved that the city council extends its deepest sympathy to his wife Joyce and to the Caprio family with gratitude for the ways they shared him with Providence, and with recognition that his devotion to them was inseparable from his devotion to this community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to the Caprio family as a lasting expression of the respect, affection, and enduring gratitude of this council and the people of this city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion, Councilman Taylor.
Madam President, first off, I want to say thank you for putting this resolution in, because I know it comes from the heart. And I also want to thank all the 14 members for signing on to this, because we all know Judge Caprio was a very close friend of mine, as is the family. And he was, as I tell everybody, he was, he was right with Providence. He was kind, compassionate, and he always tried to help out everybody when he could. And also, even when he was out as the judge, he ended up getting the courtroom named after him. He got a grand marshal for the Dominican Parade. He was nominated for the Martin Luther King Award, the Reba Award, and he fought a hell of a battle with cancer. Two years with pancreatic cancer was a good fight. But I just want to say thank you to the family for, because as we know, everybody, wherever you go and you say, you know, I'm from Providence, they always used to say, "Oh, you know Judge Caprio? You know Judge Caprio?" It's like I said, he put us on the map, and I thank him for that, and I thank his family for sharing him with myself and also with all the residents of Rhode Island. There'll never be another Judge Caprio, a Chief Judge Caprio. And just an ending, when someone you love becomes a memory, the memory becomes a treasure. And I thank all the memories that I have with the Judge Caprio and the family, they're all treasures to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion on 26 and 27. Councilwoman Vargas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to remark my colleague about George Caprio. George Caprio helped a lot of families, especially the Latino community. I am one of them who went to testify in front of him. With my broken English, I know that he forgives the driver, that he got a speeding ticket in Providence. But he knows the immigrant community needs a lot of help, and that's why we are elected in this chamber today. We have a legend, and we should follow his footsteps, that when we work with the community, we have to remember that we work for them. And our hearts go out to them, because we don't know how they suffer in working hard to get the family out, and George Caprio was a great example. And God bless the family, and God bless everyone who got in touch with this person, that backed them. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Pro Tempore Picciardo?
Thank you, Madam President. I rise also to pay condolences and homage and tribute to the Honorable Judge Frank Caprio, as he was a friend and also a mentor for not only myself, but I think for a lot of Providence and the state of Rhode Island. As I recall meeting him and growing up in the city of Providence, you understood a gentleman, but you understand it even more when you start listening to his story as he became ill with cancer and the battle with cancer. I had the privilege of serving with Frank Caprio Jr. in the Senate, along with David Caprio in the House, and throughout those years, I was able to also get to know some of their stories, and I know now where they get, especially Frank Caprio Jr., his humbleness. But one thing that I remember the Honorable Judge Frank Caprio saying was to always stay humble, remember your roots, because he always mentioned his grandfather, who came from Italy at the age of nine, and through his eulogy at Saint Paul, we learned so much about him. Not only was he a gentleman, a father for, what, 62 years, committed to his community, to his family, and he kept saying, "Family is everything." And that is something that we, as Providence, as Rhode Island, we've embraced over the years, because he put us on the map. But now, forever, he will be remembered as a person that will always, always looked upon the city of Providence and the state of Rhode Island of hope for the immigrant to grow and for next generations to really seek that ultimate dream that we're looking for, and that is to be a monk family. There was a mention that Judge Frank Caprio was always in the state of hope. He was always in the state of hope, and that is how we should always remember him. And not just because we are only here in Rhode Island, that's our motto, but he exemplified hope for many of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Councilman Ruias?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just quickly say, well, there's nothing I think I can say tonight to capture the life impact of Judge Frank Caprio. I know, you know, he was before the council last year, and that's when I met him for the first time. I'll just say this, Judge Frank Caprio, he, his impact showed us that compassion and accountability when it comes to the judicial system can coexist, and that's been a powerful observation takeaway when I think about his life and impact. The other thing I'll say is, you know, well before I became city counselor in my early twenties, and I believe I mentioned this to some of you, is my brothers and I would sit at the kitchen table and come up with a plan to somehow meet him, and the plan was that we would intentionally get a ticket, and so that we could be summoned before him to actually meet the judge. We didn't end up getting a ticket, but years down the road, we were glad to have met him. But, you know, he had an amazing life. We're talking teacher at Hope High School, city counselor, veteran, he did it all, and he was a true public servant. So that being said, rest in power, Judge, and my thoughts go out to the family during this time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Further discussion. Majority Leader Espinal.
Madam President, thank you so much for the opportunity. There is so much that could be said about Honorable Judge Frank Caprio, so I want to rise and extend my condolences to his family and to all of his friends, especially to our colleague. I think George Caprio embodies what we all aspire to be one day and what we want our loved ones to be. He lived a great life, he lived a life that was blessed, not only by his family and those that knew him, but for everyone around the world. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peterson?
I'll be extremely brief, because I think I'm echoing everything that everybody else has said. The family has always been very kind to me, and as I got to know the judge very briefly in this time in office, one of the things that I remember him always telling me, we always had our connection of Suffolk University together, but one of the things that he always reminded me of when we saw each other was to always be kind. And I think that's a page that we can all learn from and take as counselors here, as elected officials, where you lead with compassion and empathy and not necessarily in our own personal interests. So I just want to, again, offer my condolences to the family, and thank you for sharing him with all of us.
Thank you. Further discussion. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you all very much. This is the first of many ways that I think we will continue to honor his memory and legacy over coming months. Madam Clerk, item 28.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading, write in 28.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on item 28. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Madam Clerk, please refer 28 to the Committee on Ordinance. So noted. Item 29.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading, write in 29, and pass on a voice vote.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you please read item 29?
Whereas Melvin F. Brundage was a much esteemed and longtime resident of Providence. And whereas Mr. Brundage was also a public servant, having served the city for 22 years in maintenance, and became a well-liked and respected figure by the residents of Hartford Projects. Whereas Mr. Brundage was known to his friends and many others as Tank, and was a devoted, supportive friend known for his big smile, hearty laugh, playful humor, bracing candor, and willingness to listen. And whereas, Mr. Brundage was likewise an example of familial devotion as a beloved father, grandfather, brother, uncle, and cousin. And whereas, Mr. Brundage, who passed away on June 23rd, 2025, at the age of 64, is survived and missed terribly by seven children: Curia, James, Sharad, Taron, Shaquina, Mykwan, Lavanda, two stepchildren, Jermon and Renika, a sister, Minister Barbara Bryant, and many grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and cousins. And whereas, the Providence City Council sincerely desires to honor Mr. Brundage as a Providence resident and a former employee of the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the Providence City Council celebrates the life and legacy of Melvin F. Brundage and offers its deepest condolences to his family. And be it further resolved that upon passage, copies of this resolution be transmitted to the family of Melvin F. Brundage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion? Councilwoman Graves?
Yes, I put in this because I've been knowing Tank all his life, basically. He was a friend of my, one of my younger brothers. He grew up in this community, being, always being a kind, wonderful guy, you know? He was somebody that everybody wanted to be around. He listened to everybody, and he always worked hard. And even if he got into trouble, he made you laugh about getting into trouble and saying, "Okay, I learned my lesson, I'll know that again," you know, type of thing. He just was an all-around great person. I think sometimes we get caught up in titles and positions when we give out these things, but sometimes we just need to give it to the people that are out there in the community doing their best, and while they're doing it, they're sharing their love and showing children, because he was very, as you can tell, he got nine of his own. He always showed the kids that you could always make it, you can always do well. He was a nice-looking young man, so the ladies loved him. But he just, but the guys did too. He was one of the ones, if he went into a barber shop, everybody in the barber shop knew him. And he was well-liked on the South Side, the East Side, the West End, but the North End, Smith Hill, was his home. And I just think, you know, for him to have worked for the city of Providence for all those years until he got sick, he should be honored to. So I hope that everybody will sign this, because I think he definitely deserves something, some type of recognition. And his family is still hurting. I hope that some of them have made it down here, but I forgot to tell them about it until about 11 o'clock this morning. So hopefully, when we have this actual thing to give him, they will all be here. But like I said, he is well-liked by so many people. He was part of so many different groups, and I don't think there's a person out there that couldn't, he wouldn't be friends with, and that he didn't care where you came from, you know, or where you ended. If you're laying in the street drunk, he'd say, "Hey buddy, you okay?" You know, that type of person. So I like people that just care, and everybody knew that he cared. Everybody knew that he truly listens. When he said, "Okay, you know, I may not be able to help you, but I always got an ear. I may not be able to help you, but I always got a shoulder," you know? So he didn't realize just how many people he touched and how many people he helped just by having that ear and that shoulder. That's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I hope we're sorry for your loss. Further discussion on 29? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Item 30.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the read of item 30.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on item 30? Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam President. I won't ask for it to be read, because it's a long one, but I will speak on this resolution. And so, this resolution is for providing a little bit more transparency and honoring community and history of the Gilbert Stuart School. As member of this city council, our chief responsibility is oversight, and that requires full and timely access to information. Oversight cannot be effective without documentation, updates, and transparency. When this project began, I emphasized two priorities, even with all the schools in the city of Providence. One, have meaningful community engagement. And within Gilbert Stuart and that community is, let's look at, let's study whether we could incorporate parts of the existing school's architecture. To date, slowly has been trickling in. Architectural designs are not yet complete, yet the timeline shows demolition will happen before we can even review them. Once the building is demolished, any option to preserve elements that could save money or add character is gone. I requested architects' work, product, and analysis, but weeks later, that remains questionable and unanswered. My resolution seeks to correct this by halting demolition until designs and cost estimates are finalized and reviewed by an independent cost estimator. This is not about blocking the project, or our kids deserve the best school, especially in the South Side and the West End, and I'm biased. And as a former student there, I'm biased. Again, this is not about blocking the project. It is about transparency, fiscal responsibility, and respect for a community and its history, and the history that it pertains, for the namesake, Gilbert Stuart. We can allow remediation to continue, but the structure must remain intact until this body has the information needed for true oversight. This resolution spells all of this out. Some key points that I would like to highlight, again, is that the primary goal is not to stop completely this project, is to respect the community, respect the process, give us the information, so that way we, in the community, and we as city council, can make credible and oversight regarding this structure. This resolution aims to ensure that the city council has the information and the opportunity to perform its duty of oversight. It demands that all pertinent details, designs, and analysis from the architect be disclosed to the city council. It requires that the final designs and cost estimates be completed, reviewed by an independent party, and presented before demolition proceeds. It calls for an analysis of whether parts of the existing building's architect can be preserved, potentially saving money, and honoring its namesake and history of Gilbert Stuart. This resolution ensures a thorough, well-documented process is followed, guaranteeing the best and most responsible use of funds. Ultimately, the resolution seeks to ensure that a transparent and thorough process has been conducted to deliver a new school that parents, neighbors, and children can be proud of. I look forward, with your support, to work together, and working together with the committee and the community to ensure this happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Pro Tem. Further discussion on item 30? Councilwoman Graves.
Could I do the personal preference thing?
After we vote on 30, yes. Further discussion? All in favor? Any abstentions or nays? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please refer item 30 to the Special Committee on Hope.
So noted.
Councilwoman Graves.
Okay, sorry. The family has came in, or a couple of members, so the family has came in for Tank, and I just would like to acknowledge them and let them know. Could you read it one more time? One second. Thank you.
Whereas Melvin F. Brundage was a much esteemed and longtime resident of Providence, and whereas Mr. Brundage was also a public servant, having served the city for 22 years in maintenance, and became a well-liked and respected figure by the residents of Hartford Projects. And whereas, Mr. Brundage was known to his friends and many others as Tank, and was a devoted, supportive friend for, known for his big smile, hearty laugh, playful humor, bracing candor, and willingness to listen. And whereas, Mr. Brundage was likewise an example of familial devotion as a beloved father, grandfather, brother, uncle, and cousin. And whereas, Mr. Brundage, who passed away on June 23, 2025, at the age of 64, is survived and missed terribly by seven children: Kirya, James, Sharad, Taron, Shaquina, Mykwan, Lavanda, two stepchildren, Jermon and Renika, a sister, Minister Barbara Bryant, and many grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and cousins. And whereas, the Providence City Council sincerely desires to honor Mr. Brundage as a Providence resident and as a former employee of the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the Providence City Council celebrates the life and legacy of Melvin F. Brundage and offers its deepest condolences to his family. And be it further resolved that upon passage, copies of this resolution be transmitted to the family of Melvin F. Brundage.
Thank you. We already went through this thing, and it has been voted upon, but I just want to let, acknowledge the family and just let you know that we love Tank. I love Tank, and I'm glad that we were able to do this for the family. And you should get something soon. And thank you for coming, and I apologize for just telling you this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for coming tonight. And please know the council offers our deepest sympathies, and thanks for all of his years of service. Item 31.
Madam President.
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the read of items 31 through 33, a pass and a voice vote.
A second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on items 31 through 33? Councilwoman Ryan.
Madam President, could you kind, I'd like to kindly ask that the resolution be read into the record.
Item 31, yes. Thank you.
Whereas Armand E. Battistini Jr., a lifelong Providence resident, epitomized an abiding and admirable civic spirit in a life committed to his community and the city. And whereas, that spirit led Mr. Battistini to public service, including honorable service in the United States Navy, and service to the city as a student support specialist for the Providence Public School Department, and as a supervisor and director for the Robert F. Kennedy Recreation Center for the Recreation Department. And whereas, Mr. Battistini also served as a representative for the 8th District in the Rhode Island House of Representatives, which includes the Elmhurst and Mount Pleasant neighborhoods of Providence from 1977 to 1992, chairing the Joint Committee on Accounts and Claims, and serving as vice chair of the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee. And whereas, the devotion of Mr. Battistini to his community and the city was also invincible in his long involvement with youth sports, from his 41 years as a board member of Elmhurst Little League, and his 61-year tenure as a coach of the St. Pius Catholic Youth Organization Basketball Team. And whereas, Mr. Battistini supported generations of Providence youth through his many commitments, creating a community of people whose lives were improved by his care and his mentorship. And whereas, on November 28, 2016, Councilwoman Joanne Ryan, Ward 5, established a recreation center at Pleasant View School, and on September 26, 2017, subsequently sponsored and passed a resolution of the Providence City Council officially naming the center the Armand E. Battistini Jr. Recreational Center. And whereas, the Providence City Council wishes sincerely to further honor the continuing legacy of Mr. Battistini in the 5th Ward and in Providence widely. Now therefore be it resolved that the Providence City Council respectfully requests that the Board of Park Commissioners rename Obadiah Brown Field and the adjacent splash pad, both located at Armand E. Battistini Jr. Recreational Center in honor of Armand E. Battistini Jr. And be it further resolved that upon passage, copies of this resolution be sent to Commissioner of Parks Wendy Nielsen, Acting Director of Recreation Jackie Poelius, and the members of the Board of Park Commissioners, the City of Providence Recreation Department, and to the family of Armand E. Battistini Jr.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading that so eloquently. I would just like to say that I think everyone knows that this is the last or the most recent rec center to come online in the city of Providence. When I was campaigning, there was no rec center in my ward. I knocked on so many doors with Armand Battistini, who was the chair of the ward committee at the time, and so many families asked for a safe place to send their kids after school for safe programming and athletic pursuits. It became my charge to fulfill my goal, to serve my community, and Armand and I embarked, after elected, on a whirlwind tour of the 5th Ward, trying to identify a rec center. Obviously, if you can imagine, the costs to create a rec center were coming in, in millions and millions of dollars. After a lot of thought and work with my colleagues on the council, we identified $50,000 in CDBG money allocated to each ward at that time. I took my $50,000 and went to the Pleasant View School. We put up a door, a security door, to petition off the school from the pool and the athletic, the basketball court, the gym, if you will. And essentially, what we did was, most of the kids coming on to Pleasant View, at the end of the day, would march right into the rec center, and we'd close the door behind them and secure the school facility. But that's how we opened the Armand Battistini Rec Center. And Armand, we named it after him because of his obvious service to our community, certainly befitting. He devoted his entire professional life, if you will, and adult life, to the service, in-service to his community. So we named the rec center after him, and each and every year, with all the little tidbits of funds that the council is able to provide, we were able to improve it, enhance it, complement it. We built a splash pad, and most recently, we've improved the field that's behind the rec center. And it just seemed fitting that we expand on the effort that began with a $50 CDBG grant, and again, honoring Armand's commitment to our neighborhood and our kids, to name those resources after Armand and connect them to the rec center. So that's what this does, and I hope you join me in supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Item 31 through 33. Majority Leader.
Madam President, thank you. I rise to speak on item 33, on behalf of Councilwoman Vargas, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight, but we know how enthusiastic she would have been to speak about the resolution celebrating the Hispanic Heritage Month, which describes our culture, our heritage. But again, she cannot be here, so I'll ask the clerk to please read it, let's reference it to the records. Thank you.
Whereas, each year from September 15 to October 15, the United States observes Hispanic Heritage Month to recognize the culture, history, and contributions of Hispanic Americans. And whereas, the celebration coincides with the Independence anniversaries of several Latin American countries, including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, Chile, and Belize. And whereas, the Hispanic community represents nearly half of Providence's population, enriching our city with traditions rooted in family, faith, music, art, cuisine, and civic leadership. And whereas, Hispanic Americans have contributed greatly to the fields of education, business, science, the arts, government, and more, strengthening not only the cultural fabric of Providence, but the nation's character as well. And whereas, the city of Providence is proud to honor the dedication, resilience, and creativity of its Hispanic residents, whose impact continues to shape the city's growth and identity, and will always work to protect their rights, empower their voices, and fight for their inclusion. Now therefore be it resolved that the Providence City Council reaffirms September 15 to October 15 of each year as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Providence, and celebrates the achievements and legacy of Hispanic Americans.
Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam President. So again, she, Councilwoman Vargas cannot be here tonight, but she also wanted me to communicate to our colleagues that she will be having a parade on Pocasset Avenue, September 13, in celebration of the Hispanic Heritage Month, thanks to the clerk and to our policy team, who put this resolution together, which actually speaks about all of the successes that the Hispanic community has had. And I think that that is apparent here tonight, when we talk about six Hispanics in the council. And also, at the state level, almost the half of the Providence population, as the resolution stated, is Hispanic, and we're all just looking to contribute in a positive way, in whatever aspect, and an important aspect in our city. So we stand strong in this country, and we'll keep moving forward in a very positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vargas.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President. I rise to thank the clerk for reading the resolution about the Hispanic heritage. If we put all the countries in that page, we won't be able to fit in. We miss in Colombia, Argentina, Peru, a bunch of countries. So I want to say, like, thank you to the American people for allowing us, as a Latino, as a Hispanic, to be in this country, and we... as a Hispanic, to be in this country, and we contribute a little bit to keep this city affluent, like, and I want to say thank you because allowing us to celebrate the Hispanic Heritage Month, that's big in this country. And this is the only country that allows us to do a lot of things. Not everybody where in the world can celebrate the Hispanic heritage or any other race or culture. And I feel very proud to be in America by am a Latino. And a Latino that have my, my roots, that I celebrate, I'm, I'm born in Guatemala, I came from Guatemala, and I am an American Guatemalan. I, I am here in this position to help, to have a better city, a better community. That's why I represent more than eleven thousand people in my ward, it's Ward Fifteen, everybody doesn't know what it is. That's my ward, and I will keep doing the best to work for my constituents, and at the same time, working with my colleagues in this chamber, to have a better city. Sometimes we go that way, sometimes we go that way, but at the end of the table, we meet together to, to have the best decision. And again, thank you to the American community for allowing us to work and serve and live in this part of the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Majority Whip Sanchez.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I would also just rise, uh, to, to share of how proud, uh, I am to, to be a Latino. Um, I'm grateful for a lot of things, but being Latino is definitely, uh, up there. Um, I just want to quickly, uh, invite folks to, uh, different festivities going around and in Providence the next couple of weeks, uh, like, uh, the Majority Leader mentioned, uh, the parade in Silver Lake on the thirteenth at four PM, I believe. Uh, if folks want to participate in the parade, uh, you're more than welcome and encouraged to. Uh, this, uh, Sunday, uh, at Roger Williams Park, uh, there's going to be a Guatemalan festival. I'll, I'll be there, uh, lots of food vendors and, and celebrations. Uh, biasly, uh, the most exciting festival of the month is the Mexican Independence Day Festival, happening in Ward Six. Uh, everyone better be there, I'm, I'm not asking you to be there, I'm telling you to be there. Uh, it will be, uh, from twelve to seven, a family, uh, friendly, uh, free event, uh, for our community. Um, I believe there's another Guatemalan festival on the twenty-first, uh, in Pawtucket, that I also will, will be going. Um, I think those are it for events, uh, someone please mention if, uh, if I'm missing one. Uh, but I also want to, PBD Fest, of course, is this weekend, uh, which celebrates all of our, uh, cultural identities, uh, but I also want to highlight, uh, a fun exhibit happening at the State House right now, uh, put on by Rhode Island Latino Arts and, and Martha Martinez. Um, it highlights, uh, a lot of pioneers, uh, in our Hispanic, uh, community, including our, our pro temp, Juan Pichardo, uh, who was the first Latino in the Rhode Island Senate, I, I believe. Um, that's happening now through, uh, October, I believe, in the basement, uh, with a reception on October eighth. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion, items thirty-one through thirty-three. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Item thirty-four.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading, item thirty-four and thirty-five, and pass on a voice vote. Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on thirty-four and thirty-five? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Item thirty-six.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading, item thirty-six through forty-eight. Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second, discussion on items thirty-six through forty-eight. Councilman Taylor.
So I'm going to go right down the line, a couple. So first off, uh, item forty, I know she's not here, but I'd like to, uh, hopefully she's watching on TV. I want to, um, say, you know, we, I'm going to miss you, uh, Helen, Councilwoman Anthony. We worked together for seven years on the Finance Committee. Last term, we worked four years on the, uh, Claims and Pending Suits. Uh, we always didn't get along, but she was always professional at the end, we both were, and I will, I will miss working with her. Uh, hopefully she misses my humor here and there because she always laugh, but I'm not sure if she really laughed that way. But no, I will, I will miss her. I want to thank her. Uh, it was a pleasure working next to her, and, uh, good luck in your endeavors in the future. Now, if I can jump, can I go to forty-one? Forty-one, Dylan Conley, um, I doubt he's watching because he's a little kid, so, but, um, I want to thank him for his, uh, work on the Board of Licenses. He was always a pleasure to work with. Any problems I had with, uh, liquor stores or, I mean, uh, I'm sorry, nightclub, or, um, or liquor stores too, but nightclub, and, uh, auto mechanic places, I always went down, and he always was very helpful, um, to me from the very beginning, which, when I started seven years ago, he was very helpful. And the last one, Angela Harris, uh, I kind of wish she was here, I'm not sure that she was invited, but, um, twenty-five years to work in the city clerk's office. We all know that is not easy, right clerks? To do all the meetings and try to get along with everybody and everything, but I want to thank, hopefully she's watching with her husband Larry. I want to thank her for the twenty-five years that she did in the city clerk's office, and I would also hope that, um, the president of the city clerk could put together, uh, uh, resolutions, I, I mean, uh, citations signed by all of us for the retirement. So Helen Anthony, Dylan Conley, and Angela Harris, good luck in your retirement, hope to see you around, and, uh, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Councilman. Further discussion on items, uh, I lost my place here, thirty-six through forty-eight. Uh, Councilwoman Graves.
I'm going to do a couple to you. Um, forty, um, right now, I'm kind of floating because this side of me is gone. I'm used to having Helen here, I'm used to talking to her, and we exchange information and, and clarify stuff, you know, what is this? I don't know what this means, you know, or whatever. She was an excellent person to work with in finance, she is an excellent, um, council person to work with overall. Um, she gave her all to that position, and she was fair, she was kind, and she would look if you said, you know, something's not quite right with me, would you, could you tell me exactly what you think? So we bounced ideas off of one another, and that's what we really want to do. We didn't come from the same points all the time, you know, but we all, she was always willing to listen, she was always willing to share. She was definitely a bright light in this chamber. She's going to be missed by all of us, I know. Um, I like the number fifteen, um, I just hope whoever fills this seat is half as good as Helen was. I'd be happy. Um, she gave her all. When she got in the accident, she decided to come back, she gave as much as she possibly could. I understand why she left, but I still feel like she deserted me a little tiny bit, but that's okay. Um, she's definitely a good person, inside and outside of the chambers, and she had a lot of respect for each and every last one of us. We've talked about each other, about all the councils, and it was always a grain of respect for everyone. So that's not always done. She definitely cared about all of us, and I hope we all felt that, and I hope we all know that she was one of the good ones, and she is an example that we all should be following after. I know I am, and she will be solely, solely missed. That's all I can keep on saying, and hopefully we are planning to do something, you know, um, and not just pass her by, because she put too much time and effort and energy into this place. She put half her soul into this. We got to celebrate. The other one that I want to talk about is Angela, the clerk, in the clerk's office. Angela was again a gem. When I go into the clerk's office, there's a lot of bright lights in there. There's a lot of bright lights in there, and they know how I feel about them. She was the one that shone even brighter sometimes. She just made you feel welcome, she was efficient. I'm sorry that she left. Um, hopefully, she'll get to go back to South, back home, because she's from the South too, and, and that's home. Hopefully she'll get, her and her husband will get to go back home, but I want her to know that we miss her, we loved her, and if there was any reason for her to go, please don't have no animosity for nobody because we all love you, Angela, and I hope you know that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Further discussion. Councilman Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I obviously want to echo the sentiments of what my colleagues have said about Angela and about Helen. I just want to, uh, thank Angela for her years of service and, uh, for her allowing me to ask her for last-minute citations, um, and, and my apologies also extend to the clerks here, um, as I did that just today. Uh, but, so Angela, if you're hearing this, thank you so much for your, your service. Um, I also want to speak about our colleague Helen Anthony, um, what a vacuum she leaves in the council, a, a significant void. Uh, when I, when I first met, uh, Councilor Anthony, it was before I was sworn into office, and it was at Dunkin' Donuts we met. That sounds like a Rhode Island story, uh, but, um, you know, we talked about our goals and, and, and what we wanted to achieve in our, um, upcoming term, and without hesitation, I asked her, and she'd said, um, transparency in government. And I believe she did exactly that as Chair of Finance. She pulled back the curtain on our, uh, city's finances, on our city's budget. Uh, she held more public hearings, um, I believe, on our city budget than ever before, and she deserves so much credit for that. And one thing I love about Helen is that, uh, she don't play these political games. Um, she tells you where she stands on an issue, uh, she, there's no political maneuvering with her, and, uh, you know, she'll tell you where she stands on a vote, uh, before, well before the vote takes place, and so there's no guessing games. And she always allowed for, uh, good-faith dialogue, even if we may have disagreed, uh, she approached every conversation in good faith. And, um, I just hope that whoever comes after her embodies those same principles. So Helen, if you're hearing this, um, you know, we, we love you, we adore you, and thank you so much for the impact you've had on this body. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Councilman, uh, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to rise and, uh, extend my, um, congratulations on, to Angela Harris on her, uh, retirement. Uh, of course, we all feel saddened, uh, by her leaving, but it is for her best, uh, and thank her for always being there, uh, whenever I or any of our colleagues needed anything. Uh, thank you, Angela, and I wish her the best. And of course, I want to rise, uh, to say a few words in regards to my golly to the right, Helen Anthony. I think that when you're looking to define a person, uh, it, it, it's hard to do, uh, but when it comes to her, she actually defines what it is, uh, to be resilient, what it is to be strong, to be caring, uh, to be professional, and above all, to be there when you call and you inquire and you ask. When I turn over to her, and she will always have the right answer. So she will be missed, uh, but we wish her the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilman Vargas.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, uh, Chairwoman Helen Anthony, I wish you the best. You make a decision, we respect your decision. We wish you to finish the term by, you decide to go. So my best wishes to you, but if anything we can help you in this chamber, I'm talking for myself, I don't know if anybody else would like to say yes, we're here. Thank you. Uh, to Dylan, Dylan, thank you very much for your services as a, uh, license, Chair of Board License of City of Providence. I know you work very hard to the Latino community and to anybody who wants to open a business. Hopefully the next, uh, chairperson will be very kind and, and professional to help any small business who want to come to Providence and invest in Providence. I want to welcome you to come and try our city. We need the revenue. To Angela, Angela, you made the decision to retire, I wish you the well. Best wishes to you, a lot of health for you to enjoy your retirement, hopefully the money you will get in pension will, will, and will be enough, but we're here to, if we, anything we can help, we will be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Madam President, can I use a point of personal expression?
Yeah, let me, uh, handle these, and then, absolutely.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Please refer thirty-six to the Committee on Claims and Pending Suits, thirty-seven to the Committee on Public Works, thirty-eight to Claims and Pending Suits, note thirty-nine through forty-eight as received.
So noted.
Majority Whip.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I would just like to request a very quick, uh, moment of silence, uh, in solidarity with, uh, community groups that are, uh, having a vigil right now as we speak, uh, in, uh, Burnside Park, um, in honor of all of the folks that we have lost, uh, due to overdoses, uh, here in the City of Providence. August thirty-first, uh, was International Day of Overdose Awareness Day, uh, and community groups are, uh, having a vigil right now, so we could just quickly, uh, honor and solidarity with them. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. And truly thank you for that. I don't think there's a single person, um, that I know hasn't in some way been affected by overdose, um, so thank you. Item forty-nine.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading, item forty-nine, and pass on a voice vote.
Second, Madam President.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on item forty-nine? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item fifty.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading of, motion to weigh the reading of item fifty, and pass on a unanimous rising vote.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to suspend Rule sixteen B of the Rules to the City Council in order to take a matter, not appearing in the printed docket.
Second, Madam President.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Motion to weigh the reading, item fifty-one.
Second, Madam President.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Madam President, yes.
Can you receive item fifty-one, please? No, item fifty-one is received. Thank you.
Madam President?
Majority Leader.
Being that there's no further business of the calendar, motion to adjourn, and tonight we adjourn in the name of Honorable Judge Fran Caprio.
Second, Madam President.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.